Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Education, Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, June 17th at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice President Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
The vision: Every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission: Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call, please. Cassidy?
Here.
Gadding?
Present.
Holman?
Here.
Crackey?
Here.
Proman?
Here.
Ryan?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Snipe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Nine present. Thank you. Moving on to school spotlight with Mrs. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board Presidents Snow, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Cheryl Logan. We are pleased this evening to present our 2019 Class A State Soccer Champs, the South High School Varsity Soccer Team. They are tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight. Yes, give them a hand. I have been personally seeing Principal Ruben Connel walking around town with two state champ rings on. Slightly obnoxious, but OPS proud. South High School defeated Creighton Prep 2 to 1 at Creighton University's Morrison Stadium on Monday, May 13th. This is South High's third state championship against Creighton Prep. We extend a huge congrats to the team and the coaches, and we'd like to recognize Principal Ruben Connel and Athletic Director Dennis Mitchell at South High School, as well as Coach Joe Moss. At this time, I would welcome all three to the podium, and Mr. Connel will make some brief remarks.
It'll actually be four rings when all is said and done, but who's counting? I just want to take a second to thank the Board for having us here tonight. I want to thank our head coach, Joe Moss, and our gentlemen here for being here with us tonight. You know, one of the things that we always talk about when we talk about schools is how schools represent the community and how a school building can be a reflection of that community. Soccer at South High School is our community sport. I don't know if you were at the game or if you saw it, but after we won, after Jeremiah saved us a couple times, it was amazing to see that it was not only students that were rushing the field, but it was proud moms, proud dads, older siblings, younger siblings, because at South, our community gets involved in soccer. And if you were to talk to some of our players, they could tell you that they've been playing because they were introduced by their fathers. They were introduced to the sport by their brothers and sisters and family members. And so when you see a community come together, especially a lot of our families, a lot of our students come from low-income families, so you're talking families who are working second, third shifts, coming home after a long day of work, making it over to cheer on their sons or cheer on their nephew's play, it means a little bit more for us. And I think that it also speaks to the fact with the number of players that we have here tonight, they weren't bussed here, they weren't bribed with a meal beforehand to be here, they were just told, "You're going to be, you need to be at the tack building by 6:15", and they're here. And I think that speaks to what soccer and what they mean to one another. So, behalf of South High School, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much. I've been instructed by my superintendent not to take too long, so if all you gentlemen could stand up, form in a quick line, I just want you to just say your name and what grade you're in, and then step over here, and then after everybody gets through, we would love to shake your hand and take a photo with you, or you could take a photo with me, because I'm pretty cool, so. And if you're a senior, please say that you're a senior, and if you're going to college or post-high school, let us know. Yes, sir.
Sebastian Fero, ninth grade.
Nice to meet you.
Yusuf Adan, ninth grade.
Jaiyala Gonzalez, senior.
I plan to work with the trade, so probably like plumbing or something with my uncle. That's what I plan to do after, you know, after.
Awesome.
My name is Sabio Leva, and I plan on going to UNO.
Abi Adad, I'm a junior.
Anis Abduraman, I'm a junior.
Ukashu Olio, I'm a senior, and I'm attending UNO for Law Criminal Justice.
Wow. Awesome.
My name's Edens Cisneros, and I'm a ninth grade.
My name's Javier Rodriguez, and I'm attending UNO.
I'm Brian Hernandez, and I'm a junior.
I'm Miguel Robles, and I'm a junior.
Omar Vasquez, Metro than UNO.
Ivan Hernandez, I'm a junior.
Luca Nedic, and I'm going to go back home to Bosnia.
Alan Mendoza, I'm a junior.
Francisco Molina, I'm a sophomore.
Brian Cruz, I'm a sophomore.
Omar Fergoso, and I'm a junior.
Mariso Felix, and I'm a junior.
David Rojas, and I'm a sophomore.
Coach Moss, I've been here 20 years.
Congratulations to you two. All right, gentlemen, we would like to congratulate you and shake your hands and give you a small token of appreciation of OPS Proud. Thank you.
Wish I could move, do you want to move this? Do you want to move it? If you can't see us, we can't see you. Okay.
Okay, everybody look straight ahead. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
We're going to see them all back next year, because I tallied up how many were sophomores and juniors.
They're going to have a solid team next year, in the next four years.
I know it. They're already going for it, I'm sure.
I bet.
Moving on to Superintendent and Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, Presidents Snow and members of the Board of Education and folks who are here and watching at home. Last week, we held our first safety summit at the Hilton across from the CHI Center downtown. We had more than 550 staff members to include principals, school leadership teams, central office staff members from across the district to learn more about what we need to do to improve our safety and threat assessment readiness. We are really very thankful to the leadership of Lisa Utterbeck and her team for making the event happen and for organizing a successful event. We also had in attendance our mayor, who came to bring a welcome at the beginning of our day. Parents, although the current school year is behind us, our transportation team has already started developing the bus routes for the 2019-2020 school year. Our readiness meetings for the next school year are already underway. To ensure that eligible students are accurately routed, we might make sure that parents, please confirm their current addresses, if there have been any updates, to ensure that transportation can start on the first day of school. You also can stop by or call the Student Placement Office here at the Teacher Administration Center. The earlier that you do it, the better. June 15th is an important date, but obviously you can make those updates throughout the year. Congratulations to the OPS schools and students set to compete in the Nebraska High School Theater Academy Showcase at the Orpheum on June 7th. OPS will have students competing from Burke, from Beveridge, South High School, Central, and Benson High School. We extend our best wishes to each of these students competing this upcoming Friday. Today marks our first day of summer school, and we want to thank our students and teachers who continue to log their summer reading hours for our Summer Reading Challenge. Our goal is to reach 1 million minutes. We are already one-third of the way there with 34% done. Edison Elementary remains in the lead, and I believe we have Saddle Brook and then Miller Park in third place. So, really great job to our young people. Please continue to log those minutes. I believe we're going to probably get to 3 million minutes, so that's a little subtle challenge. We'll see where we are next time, but I do believe we'll get to 3 million minutes. I have a few reflections. But before that, tomorrow, a group of 49 JROTC cadets from the Omaha area, 32 of whom are Omaha Public Schools students, will travel to Bayeux, France to participate in the 75th Commemoration of D-Day. When I first came onboard, our Mike DeBolt asked me would I go, and I said yes, and it now is coming true. So tomorrow, we will all travel through Dallas-Fort Worth to France. We will be there on Thursday, on June 6th, for the actual commemoration. Students will be participating in parades on Thursday and Friday, along with dignitaries from around the world to commemorate an important day in the history of the, not just the history of the United States, but actually the history of the world. So we're very excited about that, and I found out this afternoon, KETV did ask for us to do a video blog, so we'll be doing that, so please, you'll be able to follow what we are doing together, beginning tomorrow. As we have a very exciting time, we have several students who haven't flown before, so their first flight will be, the second flight will be nine hours, so they will probably think this isn't really so great after they do that, but we're really excited and really appreciate Susan Kristofferson and her team, Mike DeBolt, and all of the JROTC folks for making sure that this opportunity happened for our young people. We will be on Omaha Beach on D-Day. It's extremely meaningful. I want to conclude my reflections tonight with my first year as Superintendent of Omaha Public Schools. I count many things as accomplishments this year. One of them is building a positive and open relationship with the Board of Education. It is so important that the Board and Superintendent and the staff work well together and share a common vision and goals for our school district. While we won't always agree, we always keep our children as first and foremost in every decision that we make. So many people have welcomed me into their world during my first year, and I'm looking forward to my second year after some rest this summer, because I'm tired, but my first year has had, I've had a really smooth transition, and I want to publicly thank our Chief of Communications, Monique Farmer, our Chief of Staff, Matthew Ray, our Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Tony Turnquist, our Chief of Information Services, Rob Dixon, our General Counsel, Megan Neiles Brash, our Chief of Student Services, Lisa Utterbeck, our Chief Academic Officer, Melissa Comine. All of these people helped me during my first year. I would not have been able to be successful, including all of the teachers and students who have been so kind to me during my first year and allowed me to learn how to be a superintendent in a supportive and nurturing environment. I cannot thank you enough. Did I miss Chief of Human Resources? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Mr. Wakefield, I'm sorry. We've spent a lot of time together lately, so, I mean, a lot of time together. So, thank you, Mr. Wakefield, and I'm hoping that you also get some rest, because you have been working at triple speed. I also want to acknowledge three of our new school leaders that are here. Emily Hughes, who will lead Oak Valley School, Kristen Denton, who will lead Minnaloosa School, and Meg Searle, who will lead Mountview School. We're tickled that you are here tonight and look forward to your first year. It's a grind, but it's the best grind you ever had, so looking forward to supporting you as you transition to your new role. I continue to be honored to serve as a Superintendent of Omaha Public Schools. It is a jewel in the community. We love our students, all of them. We love them on their good days, and we love them on those days when I have to tweet back at them, because they've not done something that is good, but they're all wonderful and deserving of love and support. And we have so much to be proud of, but now it's time for some rest for summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Moving on to Board members. Mrs. Crackey.
Couple of things. One is, I really enjoy getting newsletters from the schools I represent, others could send me some too, but there's something about a hard copy for me. I can note it, I can see dates or things that are going to happen in the schools, and that means a lot to me. I know I could go and sit on the computer for a long time and get all that information, but I sure like the hard copy to look at, and I keep those hard copies and refer to them later. The next thing I want to acknowledge is that I went to the graduation of the multiple path graduation that took place in the building out in Fort Omaha, and there were this many groups, the room was full, grandparents, parents, and the students. And they were the students that went through the Accelerare Program, Adult High School, Gateway to College, Independent Studies, and UNO Middle College. And I thought it was a really good graduation, and one of the things that happened was I shook hands with the girl, she had pink in her glasses, and I shook hands at the Burke graduation. The next day, I saw her on the stage, and she was one of the speakers, and that was really something, because of the pink glasses, I remembered her. And she had so many good things to say, and good things to say about the program that she was in that morning, and how it helped her so much in graduation, otherwise she didn't really think she would have made it to that place and graduated that night. So all in all, I was really glad that I had the opportunity to go there. Before, I had seen Accelerare, but it was all by itself, and this was all of the students together, and I don't know, I don't think the community knows that we do that and that we have that, because when I mentioned it to people, they didn't know about it, and that's why I'm talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Board members? Moving on to the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So I move.
There's a motion on the floor by Dr. Holman, second by Mrs. Cassidy. Any abstentions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Proman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine, nine. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next item that we have, we have one action item, J1A 2019-2020 and 2020-2021 academic calendar changes. I believe Scott Smith-Bonney will be given the presentation.
By the way, welcome back. I say it as if you left us, but you haven't.
Back to the board.
So when I was last before you to talk about the 2019-2020 and 2020-21, sorry, I need practice saying that, calendars, the district proposed and this board passed 189 Teacher Duty Day calendar. However, recent exciting events with the OEA contract nearing completion has prompted me to come back to you tonight to propose changes to those two calendars. Specifically, the contract under consideration currently considers 188 Teacher Day contracts versus 189 Teacher Days. Therefore, we have the need to shed a day from both of those years. Our goals in doing this and reviewing the options available to us for removal of those days from the calendar include avoid impacting student days, knowing how critical they are to student success, and to use feedback from teachers to inform decisions about where to remove the day. So given those goals, the first decision for 2019-2020 that we're proposing this evening is for April 10th. Currently slated as a professional development day, the proposal is for this to become a recess day for teachers. This is due to teachers and other staff consistently highlighting in survey responses the need for a break day towards the end of the school year. Additionally, we've noted that there's very low teacher attendance on this professional development day, which is pretty late in the year for that effort. And so that is the first proposal for the 2019-20 calendar. Shifting one year to 2020-2021, the proposal, in keeping with what we see for 2019-20, is for the Wednesday, November 25th, the Wednesday prior to the Thanksgiving holiday and Thanksgiving recess. We are proposing that it would become an extension of the Thanksgiving recess for teachers, giving them that Wednesday off, mirroring what we've done for 2019-2020. And certainly, this comes with the greatest number of comments of teachers. On any modifiable day or area within the calendar, this being their greatest interest generally that we see from year to year. So with that, there's our proposal for this evening to go to 188 A duty calendar by removing these two days from the calendars in question. Any questions I can assist with?
Any questions? Mr. Proman.
I'm trying to pull up the, is there a proposed, the calendar itself hasn't been developed, is that right? Just days?
That's correct. We have a draft stage that will be able to be made available to everyone once it's done, but yeah, we don't have one on me today.
Sorry, my internet's not working. I'm trying to pull up this year's calendar. If I could have just a moment, I'm pulling it up. I guess my question is, are there any days off already in April, now that we're moving to one on April 10th?
Not currently, no, not for 2019-2020. There was a day off for students on that April 10th day, but it was a teacher report day.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Cassidy?
I'm just curious. I do love that we take into account our teachers' input on what day that they would like. I'm assuming that teachers may have picked April 10th due to it being Good Friday? Is that maybe safe to say?
It also occurs right in the heart of Passover season, so I think there are a number of things that kind of conflict.
Which I enjoy that myself. I mean, I'm excited that that's a day in April that we're looking at just for that aspect of it, so, and I do appreciate the fact that we do ask teachers, so just kind of an aside.
Absolutely. Most definitely.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Smith-Bonney.
Going back to my agenda, one second. All right, so this is an action item, and this action item, J1A, is pending the contract approval with OEA. So whoever makes that motion, would you please mention that in your motion?
Pending the contract approval with OEA, I recommend that we accept the changes to the 2019-20 and 2021 academic calendars.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Gadding, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Gadding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Proman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Nine, nine. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We do not have any receipt of reports. And Dr. Holman?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, personnel, and legal advice.
So a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Dr. Logan, Dr. Holman, sorry. Third, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please. Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Proman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Nine, nine. Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation-
So whoever makes that motion, would you please mention that in your motion?
Pending the contract approval with OEA, I recommend that we accept the changes to the 2019, 20, and 2021 academic calendars.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Gotti, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nai Nai. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We do not have any receipt of reports. And Dr. Holman.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, personnel, and legal advice.
So motion on the floor to go into closed session by Dr. Logan, Dr. Holman, sorry. Third, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please. Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Nai Nai. Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, personnel, and legal advice. Let the record reflect the board running the closed session at 7:01. Thank you.
Hello.[614.54]
Left Director's Fugue Board came a closed session at 7:41, meeting adjourned for 7:41.
Left Director's Fugue Board came a closed session at 7:41, meeting adjourned for 7:41.